Welcome to the April 2 meeting in the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilman Eddie Smotherman has our prayer and our pledge.
If you would, please bow your head. Lloyd, thank you for this day and thank you for all the blessings that we continually receive here in Murfreesboro. We're so blessed to live in such a wonderful city. Be with those who aren't as fortunate as we are tonight and their suffering, who are sick, who are grieving. Be with those, cast your healing hands upon them. Be with this council tonight as we do the city's business and give us wisdom and prudence that we make the decisions that will be best for our city and improve the quality of life that we enjoy here. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You have the consent agenda in front of you, have several different items. Is there anything, have any questions about?
We're looking at things on December 24th. Getting away from us.
That's right.
Mayor, seeing those comments, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
You have two meetings in front of you for the minutes, March 19th, 2015, a special meeting, and March 19th, 2015, a regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
Move approval of minutes. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150806 to annex an area at 4439 Manson Pike and adopt for the same plan of services.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150807 to annex an area along the east side of Elam Road and adopt for same plan of services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150806 to annex an area along the east side of Elam Road and adopt for same plan of services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150807 to annex an area along the east side of Elam Road and adopt for same plan of services. Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150807 to annex an area along the east side of Elam Road and adopt for same plan of services.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150807 to annex an area along the east side of Elam Road and adopt for same plan of services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150807 to rezone 0.7 acres along the east side of Elam Road to residential multifamily 16 RM 16 district and to zone approximately 7.78 acres along the east side of Elam Road as residential multifamily 16 RM 16 district simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150807 to annex an area along the east side of Elam Road and adopt for same plan of services. Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150807 to rezone an area at 1516 East Main Street to residential multifamily 16 RM 16 district.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 150807 to amend Murfreesboro City Code Appendix C, City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Employers' Revised Pension Plan, Article 10, Pension Committee, Section 10.01, Committee Members.
Mayor and council, I'm asking you to pass this ordinance to correct an oversight on my part. We adopted a restatement of the pension plan and had to, on first reading, had to wait for IRS approval. While we were waiting, you made the amendment to change the number and qualifications of the members of the pension committee and passed that first, second, and third reading in 15 days. Then the IRS came back, approved the restatement, and we finalized adoption of the restated plan. But I did not remember to amend or to pass subsequently the change in the pension committee members. This ordinance simply does that which you did before using exactly the same language. Since the pension committee has not met during that interval, you know, there isn't anything that has been adversely affected, but we do need to correct that and make that change.
Did she say it was an oversight on her part?
I think so.
Yeah. Move for approval, please.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Will now hear from the city manager with regards to the Murfreesboro 2035 update.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. We've got Aaron Tully and Francis Kellerman here from Kending Keys Collaborative, who've been working on your comprehensive plan. As we talked, when they came into town yesterday, it's been about a year since we did interviews with them. So they've been on the project, you know, almost a year. They've delivered three chapters to us, the planning context, growth capacity, and then last night, the task force reviewed the draft housing chapter. We thought this would be a good opportunity since we still have probably about a year to go for Kending Keys to come and give the council a formal update on the process. I know we've been providing copies and videos on the city's website. Certainly, we had a ton of community participation with the MindMixer website, the community workshop, the community presentations, and so we thought this would be a good opportunity for them to give you a update on it, so invite them to come forward.
Mr. Tully, Ms. Kellerman, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of city council, city staff. Thank you for the invitation to come before you all. We did want to provide you with a quick update regarding where we are with this comprehensive plan assignment. We will remain, keep this fairly brief just because in mid-June, we're going to be giving you a comprehensive midpoint briefing for not only chapters one, two, and five, which Mr. Lyons explained that we had just, we've just recently completed, but we also will have completed chapter six, Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. So with that, we do have a brief PowerPoint presentation that we'd like to introduce to you all, and Francis and I will kind of tag-team this presentation. And please interrupt us if you have any questions. You should have some handouts regarding some of the spreads out of the chapters that we've provided.
We'll get you copies of the handouts.
So just again, to provide you with an overview of the key chapters and deliverables as far as this comprehensive planning program, the comprehensive plan consists of eight principal chapters. Chapter one, planning context; two, growth capacity and infrastructure; three, mobility; four, land use and character; five, housing and neighborhoods; six, parks, recreation, natural resources; seven, economic development; eight, implementation and intergovernmental coordination. And then we're going to be providing you with an executive summary, which will be probably a 30 to 40-page, richly illustrated summary document. That's going to be important because already with these first three chapters, we're well over 200 pages, and so we're going to need something to really summarize this in a comprehensive way. We're also developing, or we have completed, a land development code critique of your subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance, and we'll be providing you with a summary of that when we're back here in June. With each chapter or plan element, each is based on a series of guiding principles which we have summarized every time we've been here. In conjunction with this comprehensive plan, we're also, one of our subconsultants, and forgive me for not mentioning them, our subconsultants consist of Smith, Sekman, and Reed, who provided us with a, with a utilities infrastructure perspective as far as part of chapter two, as well as Neil Schaefer, who is providing support for the development of the 2040 major transportation plan. So to date, as Mr. Lyons had mentioned, we have completed chapters one, two, and five. We decided to do it in this order so as to provide our subconsultant Neil Schaefer more time with which to develop the major transportation plan, which we will then summarize in chapter three. So they're, they're still working diligently on this, and we're meeting with them tomorrow. The, the major transportation plan will consist of a series of technical memoranda as well as a major thoroughfare plan as well. With regard to the schedule, you can see some of the critical dates. As Mr. Lyons had mentioned, we still have well over a year to go, so we're not quite halfway there. The bulk of the plan will be completed in 2015, and so we'll be kind of completing the remainder of that in 2016 and hopefully council adoption. I'll turn this over to Francis here. We've, we have a very robust public engagement program that has been very successful to date, but Francis, why don't you take over?
Great, thank you. So KKC touts a community engagement approach that is high-tech and high-touch, and I'm going to quickly just read through the ways in which we've attempted to engage the community, which have either been completed already or are in progress right now. So in terms of high-touch, we've planned for five listening sessions, nine comprehensive plan task force meetings, two joint workshops, one midpoint briefing, which will happen in June, as Aaron mentioned, three community workshops, six outreach presentations, one planning commission public hearing, and a city council public hearing. In terms of high-tech, we have 19 newsletters, which have ranged from introducing the project as well as promoting the MindMixer site, which the next slide, we'll sort of delve into that, but MindMixer has been our attempt to have what we've called a virtual town hall, where we've asked a series of topic-based questions, spanning surveys to just general idea submissions on a variety of topics, and community members have been able to give their input and comment in various ways. Next, in terms of high-tech approach, we have had four press releases, which has been coordinated with the communications department here within the city of Murfreesboro, and, and I'll definitely mention that we've been very fortunate that you all have such a robust communications department, because a lot of this high-tech engagement approach really depends on that arm of the city, and part of the success of our high-tech approach has really been the support we've gotten from, from your communications department. So a lot of kudos to all involved with that. And then lastly, one community survey, and that has yet to be released. So as I mentioned, MindMixer has been this interactive online site. This graphic is produced by MindMixer. It's essentially a snapshot of the individuals who've been involved in MindMixer. In order to get into MindMixer, you are required to put your name, email, and then some very basic information about yourselves, mainly your age and your zip code. And, and so MindMixer uses this information essentially to summarize who is the average participant within the community, what is their age, sex, and where generally within the community are they living. So we've had a lot of success with MindMixer in Murfreesboro. We have had over 400 active site participants, meaning over 400 people have been commenting and answering the questions that we've posted. We've had thousands of people visit the site, and in terms of what we've produced, in terms of content, we've asked 31 questions, and this has spanned about eight months, and unfortunately, it is ending on Saturday, but it's been a really successful run, and so much so that the MindMixer company has asked Murfreesboro to be sort of a spotlight of their, of their company, and that's, that's been really exciting for, for us to, to be a part of. So the below graphics sort of represents the average participant within the MindMixer site, and so that shows that roughly the average participant is a 42-year-old male and living within a variety of different subcodes, but it's just been an interesting attempt to sort of reach out to the public, those who may not be able to attend the outreach meetings or are really interested in adding some more commentary to this project.
I'd also like to, to mention that throughout this process, we have been going online and basically responding or trying to prompt people to continue the dialogue, to expand on what they were talking about. So if you all have a chance to go through a lot of the comments, you'll see our comments as well in there. But also, what we've tried to do, just so we can show people that we've been listening to them, is that we've kind of peppered the chapters with significant quotes throughout each chapter in relevant places. So I think that also illustrates how this plan has been informed by the, the general public. So again, as Francis mentioned, we've had over 3,000 people visit this site, so that's certainly, what, almost 2.5% of your population, which is significant.
All right, and just to add to what Mr. Tully said, one of the members of the public who was at the task force meeting last night has said he's been active on the MindMixer site and, you know, knew there was an opportunity to put, you know, comments on there, and he said, "I read one of the chapters," and he said, "I saw my quote." He said, "I knew you guys were taking it serious."
That's awesome.
So you'll see quotes throughout the chapters, and those are coming from our residents who commented on the MindMixer website.
And as Francis mentioned, this is coming to a close. It was supposed to be five months of active use, but we saw that this was being successful, and we kind of finagled a deal with MindMixer to where they gave us three months of extra use, so that was good. But for the last couple of days, we just sent out a newsletter last night, just letting people know that you have two more days to, we opened up all of the different questions so people can go back in, and if they missed an opportunity to make a, a comment based on an early question, they now have a couple of days to do that. So we're anticipating a, kind of a rush of additional information, which we'll review. So, chapter one provided kind of a comprehensive overview of where we, where Murfreesboro is as a city. We tried, we tried to provide a snapshot in time regarding a range of different dimensions of your community, but one of the more significant points of chapter one was to develop a population projection. What is your population going to look like in 2035? This is a, let me back up and just say, it's a 20-year planning horizon that involves the lands within the city limits, but also the lands within your urban growth boundary. So the planning area includes both of those areas, so we've, we're looking all the way out to your urban growth boundary. But so based on a series of databases that we reviewed, probably five or six different significant national and local databases regarding population projections, our projections suggest that by 2035, the city of Murfreesboro will have grown to 228,000 persons, so you'll be roughly double what you are right now. We also projected that by 20, at the end of 2015, you'll be somewhere around 124,000 people. So this will provide us a way of kind of analyzing or confirming that our projections are correct or not by the end of this year. With regard to the, the entire planning area, again, which includes not only the city limits but the area within the urban growth boundary, we're looking at a population projection of little over 360,000 people, and within Rutherford County, about 509,000 people, so significant population increase. So how are we going to accommodate this, this growth over the next 20 years? That's our mandate, and so that's where we're, that's where we're heading, is trying to provide you with strategies, tools, techniques, recommendations for how to accommodate that kind of growth projection. So essentially, we started trying to understand what, what does your city consist of, and so essentially, based on the data that we had, we understood that about 67% of the lands within the planning area are devoted and zoned for residential of some density. So the remaining 33% is a combination of commercial, retail, office, industrial, transportation, infrastructure, and the like. So what we have done then was we took that as a baseline, and we projected that forward. So if we just continue on a business-as-usual path, we will arrive at a certain density and amount of land use. This is a map that attempted to basically explain or depict the amount of land that is currently under some form of development, and this came from a series of different databases as well as our scrutinizing aerial photographs, obtaining anecdotal data from your planning director, and other information. But essentially, the land area within the city limits, we believe the developed area is about 68,000, almost 69,000 acres, and the undeveloped land is about 94,000 acres. Excuse me, 9,400 acres, excuse me. And then the land area within the urban growth boundary, not including the land within the city limits, is about, the developed area is a little over 18,000 acres, and the undeveloped area is about, again, 9,600 acres. So this is a tool that we feel is fairly comprehensive, but it's going to be incumbent upon the planning department to take this and continually update it, just so you know where you are with respect to the amount of land area that you have remaining. So this is a fairly complex infographic where we've tried to take a whole lot of information and summarize it into a meaningful, or translate it into a meaningful graphic, but essentially, as we just mentioned, within the city limits, you have about 9,600 acres. Well, when you think about the additional population, the land area for residential development, for schools, for parks, for transportation, infrastructure, additional retail and commercial area, industrial area, we're looking at, you'll probably have a deficit within the city limits of about 3,000 acres, about 3,300 acres, excuse me. So that's an issue. It's like, where are we going to find, how are we going to accommodate this growth when we're, when we're looking at 3,300-acre deficit? Again, this is kind of a back-of-the-napkin kind of summary. I mean, we might be off 1,000 acres. We might, it might be only 2,000-acre deficit, but whatever it is, it just shows that you have precious little, little land with which to accommodate growth. Within the urban growth boundary, it's not much better. And you can see, and we did a very thorough analysis of the needed schools that you're going to need, both within the city limits and within the urban growth boundary, and basically, I mean, within the urban growth boundary, you're going to need a little over 880 acres for a whole bunch of different schools. That's summarized in that infographic, but essentially, there is a surplus of about 1,700 acres within the urban growth boundary, so you have a little bit of room there. There's some of that growth that can happen within the city limits, but again, we have precious little land to deal with.
Well, and another point is something we've, we've been trying to unpack with Rob is the, the state of the annexation laws, and while, while there is some wiggle room if you count available land within the urban growth boundary, that may be harder to come by for the city to annex. So it's assumed that some of those annexation laws will be worked out over the next 20 years, but currently, right now, it's important to look at what the capacity of city limits is, because that might be the constraint for the time being.
And we will be very honest that it's, there has been a learning curve here as far as really getting up to speed with respect to Tennessee law, and Ms. McGannon has been very helpful to us, as, as has Rob, in really understanding public chapter 1101 and all of this annexation stuff, which is very complicated, but we're basically assuming that it's going to be difficult to be annexing land anytime in the near future. So this is a good graphic, and we hope that you, you all will really scrutinize this, because there's a lot of information there, but it's fairly accurate. So also, looking at the planning area, we, we started looking, in chapter two, we were looking at all of the environmental constraints, you know, doing this kind of, here's the demand, this is the supply that we have, and when you start looking at all of the area in floodplain, area where there's an abundance of sinkholes, other environmental issues, that's the land you have to try to kind of remove from the equation, so again, that just adds to the complexity of this whole issue. And just a quick snapshot, this is something we've been talking at length with the task force about, is that it's, it's going to be very important for the city to balance greenfield development with redevelopment and infill development. And so when you look at city hall and look actually beyond city hall, you see a whole lot of land, and this is representative of, of a lot of your city, that there's a lot of marginal land that is really just begging to be, or it's going to need to be redeveloped. We're going to need to look at varying densities while at the same time conserving existing neighborhoods or existing neighborhood character, but also, as we were talking about last night, when you're considering trying to attract white-collar workers, you're looking at a whole different demographic potentially over the next 20 years, and they're going to be looking for different living arrangements potentially. Your housing consists predominantly of single-family detached housing. We're, we're envisioning that that equation is going to change somewhat based on new people moving to Murfreesboro. So again, that, that whole idea of redevelopment and infill development is very important, and we had, in chapter two, began to suggest different tools through which you can begin to finance and afford redevelopment with respect to tax increment financing as well as payment in lieu of taxes. Those are two viable way, viable tools in your toolbox that will provide you with the capacity to afford redevelopment. Last night, we provided an overview of chapter five, Housing and Neighborhoods, and I'll turn this over to Francis.
Sure. So this spread attempts to sort of carry through the supply-demand analysis that Aaron walked you through for chapter two, and this essentially tries to lay out, based on additional people, what is, what is the housing need and what does that look like? So again, with a back-of-the-napkin-type analysis, this looks at the additional people projected in 2035, which is an additional 111,000 people, based on the current average household size, which we're using from the Census Bureau from 2010, is 2.59 persons per household, and projecting that to see, based on that new population of 228,000, what
Projections suggest that by 2035, the city of Murfreesboro will have grown to 228,000 persons. So you'll be roughly double what you are right now. We also projected that by 20, at the end of 2015, you'll be somewhere around 124,000 people. So this will provide us a way of kind of analyzing or confirming that our projections are correct or not by the end of this year. With regard to the entire planning area, again, which includes not only the city limits, but the area within the urban growth boundary, we're looking at a population projection of little over 360,000 people. And within Rutherford County, about 509,000 people. So significant population increase. So how are we going to accommodate this growth over the next 20 years? That's our mandate, and so that's where we're heading, is trying to provide you with strategies, tools, techniques, recommendations for how to accommodate that kind of growth projection. So essentially, we started trying to understand, what does your city consist of? And so essentially, based on the data that we had, we understood that about 67% of the lands within the planning area are devoted and zoned for residential of some density. So the remaining 33% is a combination of commercial, retail, office, industrial, transportation, infrastructure, and the like. So what we have done then was we took that as a baseline and we projected that forward. So if we just continue on a business-as-usual path, we will arrive at a certain density and amount of land use. This is a map that attempted to basically explain or depict the amount of land that is currently under some form of development. And this came from a series of different databases, as well as our scrutinizing aerial photographs, obtaining anecdotal data from your planning director and other information. But essentially, the land area within the city limits, we believe the developed area is about 68,000, almost 69,000 acres, and the undeveloped land is about 94,000 acres. Excuse me, 9,400 acres, excuse me. And then the land area within the urban growth boundary, not including the land within the city limits, is about, the developed area is a little over 18,000 acres, and the undeveloped area is about, again, 9,600 acres. So this is a tool that we feel is fairly comprehensive, but it's going to be incumbent upon the planning department to take this and continually update it, just so you know where you are with respect to the amount of land area that you have remaining. So this is a fairly complex infographic where we've tried to take a whole lot of information and summarize it into a meaningful, or translate it into a meaningful graphic. But essentially, as we just mentioned, within the city limits, you have about 9,600 acres. Well, when you think about the additional population, the land area for residential development, for schools, for parks, for transportation, infrastructure, additional retail and commercial area, industrial area, we're looking at, you'll probably have a deficit within the city limits of about 3,000 acres. About 3,300 acres, excuse me. So that's an issue. It's like, where are we going to find, how are we going to accommodate this growth when we're looking at 3,300 acre deficit? Again, this is kind of a back-of-the-napkin kind of summary. I mean, we might be off 1,000 acres. We might, it might be only 2,000 acre deficit. But whatever it is, it just shows that you have precious little land with which to accommodate growth. Within the urban growth boundary, it's not much better. And you can see, and we did a very thorough analysis of the needed schools that you're going to need, both within the city limits and within the urban growth boundary. And basically, I mean, within the urban growth boundary, you're going to need a little over 880 acres for a whole bunch of different schools. That's summarized in that infographic. But essentially, there is a surplus of about 1,700 acres within the urban growth boundary. So you have a little bit of room there. There's some of that growth that can happen within the city limits. But again, we have precious little land to deal with.
Well, and another point is something we've been trying to unpack with Rob is the state of the annexation laws. And while there is some wiggle room, if you count available land within the urban growth boundary, that may be harder to come by for the city to annex. So it's assumed that some of those annexation laws will be worked out over the next 20 years. But currently, right now, it's important to look at what the capacity of city limits is, because that might be the constraint for the time being.
And we will be very honest that it's, there has been a learning curve here as far as really getting up to speed with respect to Tennessee law. And Ms. McGannon has been very helpful to us, as has Rob, in really understanding Public Chapter 1101 and all of this annexation stuff, which is very complicated. But we're basically assuming that it's going to be difficult to be annexing land anytime in the near future. So this is a good graphic, and we hope that you all will really scrutinize this, because there's a lot of information there, but it's fairly accurate. So also, looking at the planning area, we started looking, in Chapter 2, we were looking at all of the environmental constraints, you know, doing this kind of, here's the demand, this is the supply that we have. And when you start looking at all of the area in Flood Plain, area where there's an abundance of sinkholes, other environmental issues, that's the land you have to try to kind of remove from the equation. So again, that just adds to the complexity of this whole issue. And just a quick snapshot, this is something we've been talking at length with the task force about, is that it's going to be very important for the city to balance greenfield development with redevelopment and infill development. And so when you look at City Hall and look actually beyond City Hall, you see a whole lot of land, and this is representative of a lot of your city, that there's a lot of marginal land that is really just begging to be, or it's going to need to be redeveloped. We're going to need to look at varying densities, while at the same time conserving existing neighborhoods or existing neighborhood character. But also, as we were talking about last night, when you're considering trying to attract white-collar workers, you're looking at a whole different demographic potentially over the next 20 years. And they're going to be looking for different living arrangements potentially. Your housing consists predominantly of single-family detached housing. We're envisioning that that equation is going to change somewhat based on new people moving to Murfreesboro. So again, that whole idea of redevelopment and infill development is very important. And we had, in Chapter 2, began to suggest different tools through which you can begin to finance and afford redevelopment with respect to tax increment financing, as well as payment in lieu of taxes. Those are two viable tools in your toolbox that will provide you with the capacity to afford redevelopment. Last night, we provided an overview of Chapter 5, Housing and Neighborhoods. And I'll turn this over to Frances.
Sure. So this spread attempts to sort of carry through the supply-demand analysis that Erin walked you through for Chapter 2. And this essentially tries to lay out, based on additional people, what is the housing need and what does that look like? So again, with a back-of-the-napkin-type analysis, this looks at the additional people projected in 2035, which is an additional 111,000 people, based on the current average household size, which we're using from the Census Bureau from 2010, is 2.59 persons per household. And projecting that to see, based on that new population of 228,000, what is the number of housing units needed? And we've come up with over 88,000 housing units need to be in the city to accommodate that population. And that equates to an additional 42,000, almost 43,000 additional units. And then the bar chart essentially depicts the current breakdown in terms of housing type. The lightest greens characterize as single-family detached. And that's probably not surprising, that a lot of the residential within the city of Murfreesboro is single-family detached. And we essentially carried through that breakdown of housing unit type to this future 88,000 housing unit need, to just lay out kind of what that housing unit breakdown would look like. Again, this is a rough estimate, but what we are attempting to show is a tangible understanding of what that growth means in terms of housing units. And if development continues business-as-usual and there's accommodation of largely single-family detached homes, this is what it looks like in terms of the number of units. So again, it's just an attempt to really nail down what growth looks like and where in the city that can go. And if the current housing breakdown accommodates the types of housing options that are needed now and may be needed in the next 20 years.
Also, what we didn't mention was that throughout all of our chapters, when it comes to strategies, initiatives, and actions, we typically have begun with taking or excerpting pieces of our Land Development Code critique that we'll be, again, presenting to you all and the Planning Commission in June. But we explain how your subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance might be tweaked a little bit to further enable or accommodate new ways to accommodate growth and development. So also with Chapter 5, we also got into housing. And what are the, what are housing, excuse me, neighborhoods? Neighborhood best practices? What are the conditions or the features that compose excellent neighborhoods? And what we did was we looked at, just to provide a kind of on-the-ground illustration of what we were talking about when it comes to considering neighborhood fabric, connectivity, walkability, access to parks, access to schools and commercial areas, all that kind of thing. We provided first a series of vignettes to typify or illustrate our analyses. But we looked at two particular areas of the city. One was in West Murfreesboro, as you see, depicted in red here. And then this is actually it, that in greater detail, and we'll get back to that. And then the second area was what we were referring to as downtown Murfreesboro, which you see there. And it includes most of downtown, all the way over to MTSU. Oops. But with West Murfreesboro, we looked at everything from connectivity, gateways and entrances into the area. Here you can see that this whole area consists of about 7,500 people at least. And there are only basically five key entrances into this whole area right here. Also, you can see that the areas that are depicted in gold, that represents where there are sidewalks. And so in this whole area, there are probably about 30% of that whole development has sidewalks. So connectivity is a little bit lacking there, if you will. But we looked at it from a range of different lenses. And then looked at also downtown Murfreesboro, which represents kind of an original development pattern, a street grid that's very formal. But you also have many more sidewalks, but also a range of small mom-and-pop grocery stores. Walkability is somewhat more substantial. So it's not saying that one is better than another, but one represents, the West Murfreesboro development really represents an auto-oriented or an auto-centric kind of development pattern compared to downtown Murfreesboro is a much more pedestrian and walkable pattern. And so, yeah, we feel that it's going to take some combination of both of these kind of patterns to not only satisfy your citizenry, but also relieve traffic congestion, ensure walkability, healthy communities. So this is just a quick snapshot of where we are at this point. Again, we'll be providing you with, and our boss Brett Keast will be in town with us next June. So we're going to be spending probably several days with you guys in June. And so that ends our summary, but we're happy to entertain and answer any questions that you all might have.
Any questions?
I have some comments. I think you're doing a wonderful job so far. Rob and I, I told him about, I'm kind of following the Nashville next. It's the same kind of comprehensive plan. They've been doing theirs for three years. And they're getting ready to submit their plan sometime this year. So they have a lot of, you can't compare Nashville to Murfreesboro, but it's ironic that one of their major, major, major problems is transportation. Transportation, sidewalks, pedestrian, walkability, the inadequacies of the system that they have now. I mean, according to the report, there's a lot of issues with that. And as we know, we all have an issue with alternative means of transportation and funding for that. I want to let the public know that I appreciate the fact that we have, most of our council members have attended at least one meeting, either a task force meeting or a community meeting. So we appreciate that support. Because the task force, we need all the help we can get. Brother Lance, he is on the task force with me. I noticed Bill Jakes is on the task force, and he's a very, very open proponent, rational proponent for the downtown and the adjacent communities. So it's an ongoing process, and I hope the public really, really pays attention, especially to all the data, and it's a lot of it, that's out there. We need the public input, pay attention to this process, because Murfreesboro and Rutherford County will be facing huge, huge, huge issues that you just don't know. And so I appreciate everybody's participation in the process so far. But we really, really need that public input. We really do need that public input, a diverse of public input. And I feel that there's some folk and some of our public, they're not participating. If you don't participate, you won't be heard. So that's all I can tell you.
I'll just amen what you said, Ron. A plan is really only as good as the input that we give it. And even though MindMixer and some of these things are not going to be available to the public, your council still wants to hear from you, and there's still going to be plenty of public meetings where you can come and participate and give your input. If you have thoughts or perspective that you think are not being considered in this, please contact us and let us bring you into the circle, because this is something, as a community, when we start talking about 20 years in our future, you know, that begins now, and some of that perspective needs to be at the table when we make, for this document that we're creating to begin to, I use this phrase with you guys, breathe life into it. It's just pages unless we breathe life into it and make it something that it is a tool for our planning commission, for developers, for residents, for our community, for our citizens to use 20 years. It's not something that sits on the shelf. It should be a practical document that grows and gives us that springboard to be able to tell and make those decisions that enable us to be the community we want to be. And the process, we're not, well, we're not even halfway through it. So realize that a lot of people, I think, you know, when we get a certain stage of it done, we think, well, they've already decided what they're going to do. I just want the public to realize that has not been, there's not things that are chiseled in stone. We're beginning to set the table for the discussion of that with this document. So the process is still engaging, and you still have a place at the table, and I want the public to realize that.
Will you briefly go over the 30% household income that you talked about last night? You know, one time I came to affordable housing, because affordable housing is different for all of us, probably. But you made a real, something that I thought was very important that the public needs to know.
Sure. We left that out of tonight's discussion in the interest of time. We've sort of struggled with trying to condense our presentations, because there's just so much information. But yes, last night, we presented on a topic that is within Chapter 5, which is the topic of affordability and what that means across the spectrum of owners and renters within the city of Murfreesboro. And we essentially analyzed the amount per month that runners and owners are paying for their housing. And we used it, pardon me, we used the lens from HUD in their description of what cost burden equates to. And HUD defines cost burden as anyone, runners or owners, paying more than 30% of their monthly income on housing. And they go even further to define extremely cost burden as owners or renters who pay over 50% of their household income on housing costs. And the underlying importance of that analysis is if owners or renters are paying more than 30% or more than 50% on their housing, that's that much money that they don't have to pay for basic needs or even just to give back to the local economy, to go out to restaurants, shop at boutiques. So that's been a fairly agreed-upon analysis that owners and renters should spend 30% or less on housing to ensure economic viability across the board. Pardon me. So what we did is we analyzed owners and renters on essentially their level of cost burdenedness. And what we determined was that owners within the city, essentially, there are almost 30% of owners that spend more than 30% of their monthly income on housing. And then on the other side of that equation, renters, 52.9% of runners within the city of Murfreesboro are spending more than 30% of their monthly income on housing. And that's, there are a lot of factors that play into that. And there's a lot of factors that we as consultants and planners can't control, because a lot of housing is based on the private market. But I think it's important to understand that affordability is a relative term. Affordability to me is a different issue than it is to you all sitting here. But everyone has the same goal, to live in housing that is affordable to their income. And what we wanted to do is shed light on the fact that it's important to allow for housing to be affordable to a wide group within the city.
Any other questions you all might have?
You've been in Murfreesboro for almost a year now. Tell us some of the things that you've, you've been in so many different cities. Tell us some of the things that you found intriguing about Murfreesboro.
Well, it's, this has been a challenging but very exciting experience for us. It's been probably one of the, yeah, one of the best experiences as far as drafting a comprehensive plan that we've had, I would think, in speaking for both of us. But we've really appreciated your leadership, especially, your elected officials and your appointed officials as well. We've really appreciated the support that you've provided. And we are just marvel at the way you all work so well together compared to other cities where we've, where it's been a little bit more difficult perhaps. So it's been a great experience for us so far. Some of your challenges are sometimes seeming overwhelming at points. But, you know, you might not be ready for some of the recommendations that we're making now, but you may be in 10 years from now. So we're trying to think of this plan as, again, a living document that you'll be able to revisit repeatedly over the next 20 years or so. So again, it's been a wonderful experience, and we really appreciate the support you've provided us.
There were two slides that you showed tonight that really stood out to me. The one that showed City Hall and the area around it. Because I think that, although it's not what I would refer to as blighted area, there's so much opportunity there for inner-city urban growth. And I hope that development catches on to what the opportunity is that's there. Because, and Bill Jakes is the perfect example of somebody who's constantly encouraging people, "Look downtown, look downtown," because we do have a great city. It's vibrant, it's exciting in the summertime when you're downtown on the square. The Uncle Dave making days, the other activities that take place in our city that people drive a long distance forward, and sometimes we take them for granted. The other slide that you showed, I think it was the next to the last slide of the western part of the city, there's a donut hole in there where there's no sidewalks. And I think that donut hole is really not in our city. It's still county, that area was never annexed. And I think that is a good example of why we need to continue to make sure that the state understands that municipalities have responsibilities that they are trying to achieve. And in order to improve that quality of life in Murfreesboro, we need their support. And sometimes it's going to be a situation where they're not going to have to just go with the political wind, but do what is advantageous to those who are trying to accomplish something that's bigger than the vision of just the average person who's sitting back saying, "This is the right thing to do at the time." I appreciate all the data that you've gathered. You've done a phenomenal job up until this point. We do know that we've got tremendous challenges. I hope that in the very near future, we start talking about a study that will involve the future of how we're going to handle our dump situation or our sanitation and those type situations. I mean, we have to be getting very close to that day of discussion, because it, eight years or 10 years or whatever, we'll be here in the blink of an eye. And if we, you know, ideally, I would almost like for our city to be so proactive that the last few days of operation out there, that we're not dumping stuff there. So I do think that's something that we need to be very active with and looking at in the near future.
Are those, you know, how is it concerns from the council and from the community and the, you know, conversation about the comprehensive plan? Been talking to Mayor McFarlane about developing a, you know, kind of solid waste summit where we really can become, to, you know, come up with a concrete plan. And Mr. Crumley is going to be taking the lead on that. So I heard you loud and clear, and we're heading in that direction.
And would comment, Jeff Davidson with the county, he's the county deputy mayor. You hate to joke to say it's a trash summit, but really working together to get all the municipalities together, including all the council members, to discuss what our opportunities moving forward are going to be. So I think we're trying to do something maybe May or June, but we'll definitely keep everybody updated on that. It's a great point.
Mayor, I just, you know, I had one more thing is, you know, the public looks at, you know, the chapters that are all available online. You know, one of the things you'll see in the chapter will be examples from Houston and examples from other parts of the country. And we may look at some of those ideas and say, "We never really thought about that. That really doesn't sound like middle Tennessee." And it may not be a good idea for us, but here's what I do know. I think by including some of those ideas in the chapter, it gets us to dream a little bit, gets us to stretch our thinking a little bit. And while it may not be a good fit, I think that's part of the exercise here is to say, "Are there other things that maybe we never really considered, but maybe the generation of a good idea for something that does fit Murfreesboro?" So we'll see some things out there that'll maybe not what you expected. I think it's all part of that exercise to stretch our imaginations a little bit.
And really, as you start going through Chapter 5, some of the best information is Pages 532, really throughout the rest of the deal. But, you know, like a point that just pops out to show that homelessness persons in emergency shelter in 2014, emergency shelter in 2014, it was fifty-nine. In 2015, it's a hundred and thirty-three. In transitional housing, nine in 2014, forty-one in 2015. Unsheltered homeless persons, seventy-six in 2014, a hundred and twenty in 2015. So, it's from a hundred and forty-four in 2014 to two-hundred-and-ninety-four in 2015. So, as you look at our population, there's all kinds of things that we're going to have to, you know, to work on. But a lot of this information is just phenomenal information.
Mayor, what's interesting about the documents, excuse me, but just that, you know, just the process has already been healthy for our community. It started us thinking about issues that might have sat on the table a little bit longer when we see facts that back up what we've kind of already knew to some degree. But when we see the figures and the statistics, it causes us, it spurs us to action. And that's what's healthy about the planning process. Sometimes, it's not the finished document as much as it is the process. In fact, that's what planning is, is process. It's not about creating something that is, you know, a stake in the, that we, this is the goal we're going towards. It's about moving to something different than where you are and evaluating where you are and determining where you want to go. And then, in the process of going that direction, you might change something. And that's what's exciting about going through this process. But the one point that I want to make to the public, because I think this is, this is critical for this to be effective, is learn how to dialogue with us as your elected officials. Learn how to dialogue with those that may be different perspective, different opinion than you have. Let's learn as a community how to respectfully dialogue over a contentious issue. And we will be the better for it as we make these decisions. And in the long run, we'll be a better community because we will have come up with a decision that isn't one-sided or simply reflects a one perspective. It will have everyone's perspective brought to the table and we'll have a better decision. And I think, quite honestly, that's what we want. That's what I, you know, we get kind of, I get, I hear sometimes the public is apathetic or feel that they've given up on the process. But the process works, but it works when we don't give up on it and we continue to participate in it. And so, I just encourage the public, help us make this a plan that is really good for our future, and not just for yourself, but for your children and grandchildren.
Well, thank you all for coming and your hard work. And, you know, there, a lot of the information you're giving us, it's not, it does not go unnoticed. So, we appreciate your hard work.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move to consider for adoption Resolution fifteen R-09, requesting the General Assembly to amend Murfreesboro's Private Act Charter regarding the number of required reading for ordinances. Mr. Lyons.
Yes, Mayor, Council, as you know adequately, each of your agendas typically includes a first reading, second reading, and third reading of ordinances. And the request before you today in the resolution would be to reduce the number of readings from three readings to two. Typically, what happens, we have a first reading and consider the ordinance following a public hearing. You'll have a second reading of the ordinance and then a third reading, which is the final reading, and it sets the effective date. Most often, there's really not much discussion in second and third reading. We think it'll be a more efficient way to conduct the business of the city. We've heard from the customers of the city that, you know, that extra reading sometimes may take one week, but it could take two or three, depending on the council's schedule. That impacts project budgets, timelines, financing. And we certainly think that this can be something that would be more effective for us. It would require the General Assembly to make this Private Act change. I did talk to a member of our delegation, said he would be glad to introduce it. And if all members of the local delegation agree to it, it'll be approved on the consent calendar. So, we would recommend your approval of this.
Any questions or comments from the council?
As our city grows, so will the workload. And it, I think it's an excellent idea. I think it's something that, if the time's right for it, it's certainly for those who are trying to build and develop and do those things that are exciting in Murfreesboro. We want to make the process as seamless and easy as possible. And this will, this will help streamline that some.
I thought it might also cut down the number of times the city recorder has to call the roll and might misname the mayor.
I appreciate that. We'll stay here as long as you want us to.
I would move for approval on the resolution to request the General Assembly to change our charter.
Second.
Ms. Wright, we have a motion of second.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have, or Ms. Wright, do you have permits?
We do. We have three special event permits tonight, one for the United Way for an event on April eighteenth, and another one on May the sixteenth. We have one from Oakland's Association for an event on May the third, and one from the Earth Experience, the Middle Tennessee Museum of Natural History, for an event on April twenty-fifth, June sixth, and April twenty-third of next year. I think they're trying to get their year's worth on one application is why that went so far. But otherwise, I don't have any reason not to recommend these be approved.
I'll move for approval.
Motion of second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Do you have a list of statements to be paid in front of you?
We do, we do.
We've got a list that accumulates about six, six and a half million, a little over six and a half million dollars' worth of bills here. And I suggest we pay them, so I'm going to make the motion that we pay the bills.
Have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Have one item for board and commission appointments, just to, and I think this will take a motion from the council to make it clear that Mr. Demus will be replacing David Gray. Inadvertently, I think it was put that he was going to be replacing Pat Murphy, but Pat Murphy represents employers of twenty or more.
No, Mr. Murphy represents manufacturer. Mr. Gray represents managers of twenty or more employees.
What Ms. McGannon said. So, we just need a motion to ratify that.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion of second. Ms. Wright, if you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Other business from Stafford City Council? I have one item I wanted to get the council's opinion on, really to see where we should go and if there's any discussion at all. But there's been a lot of comments about specifically check cashing and title loan places. There's a new one that just opened up on Memorial two or three days ago. And I know Ms. McGannon and Mr. Ives have done quite a bit of research on this for several of us and wanted to get opinions of the council on your thoughts on those. We've talked about distance requirements. There are different things that we've, Ms. McGannon has researched for us individually and thought, or Mr. Ives, I should say, as well. But wanted to talk to you about that and see what the wishes of the council or if it's something that we should get more information to discuss.
Yes. Appreciate that.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's worth getting some information on. We need to, I mean, you know, I hear a lot of comments about it from the public. And typically, it's, you know, everything from, you know, people being taken advantage of in a lot of cases, all the way to, you know, just lots of other comments. So, I think we should certainly look into it and, of course, just see what some options might be, see what's fair, see what's likely, and then see if there's anything we ought to.
Metro Council is trying to address them in certain ways. As McGannon and I have had some conversations about these things. And I think that you need to make sure that what Metro Council is doing meets the legal challenge, because, you know, because they have a very strong lobby. And from my experience from being down at the legislature, they don't, they don't, to my knowledge, they don't have it on the radar screen. There's no legislation that I know of in these places our state regulates. So...
Doesn't the state regulate them?
But whatever we can do to do something.
And I think one thing I would, I would like to see, it's almost like some, I know we can't regulate the types of businesses that come into Murfreesboro. You know, I think, I've spoke to enough people that, you know, we've talked about different organizations and groups that come in here. And I think as, I'm speaking as my opinion here, the last thing you want is elected officials saying who can and can't come into your city. I mean, that's not what we're here to do. I may not like going to a coffee shop that you guys like going to. But the one thing that I have noticed is that some of these organizations have got into a, it almost seems like a competition to see who can be the loudest with some of their facilities. We've got one building here in town that's completely painted, the entire building, including the roof, orange. And, you know, I want to figure out, and that's some of the comments that we get, is, you know, where can you stop that? So, something that we may want to look at is some design guidelines that we have within the city that says it's not okay to paint roof and everything on your building orange. You know, the one that just opened up, they took the whole gables of their, an older house, and they're now all blue and yellow. And I, the last thing, I think, I don't want to regulate what looks good and what doesn't look good. But I think we can all say that someone painting their entire house green in a subdivision probably would not go over very well. So, if there's a way that we can look at that as well, I think that's something that I've heard from residents that they would like to see us look at.
Well, the federal government, there's a commission looking at the passing regulations toward these payday lenders. And I think the legislature is basically waiting on them, say, "Hey, whatever you all do, we'll just pass along." But I do remember, if you all remember, that there was a time when every time a new liquor store came to town, other liquor owners would come here and say, "No, don't approve. You can't do that." So, with that, I'm through.
It is a tough road to walk down. I mean, you know, one person's tacky, maybe another person's Picasso. And at the same time, we also have a situation that we don't want to get too involved with saying, "We're taking you out of the free market." And because, I mean, whether you like these places or not, the more of them there are, obviously, the more competitive they have to be, which would probably cause them to reduce the interest rates, which, you know, in some sense, may be helpful. On the other hand, you know, if you look at the Northfield and Memorial area, gosh, you can't pitch a stone now without it bouncing off of one of them. And Smyrna has already addressed it. I mean, Metro's working on it. I mean, several communities, Mount Juliet, have already done what, you know, they felt was legal. And I'm sure at some point, even what they've done will be challenged. But we, you know, I think this is a very tough situation that we've got because, I mean, you want, you want entrepreneurs to invest, you want people to take that challenge, but you don't want to see people taking advantage of your citizens. And these corridors where they know they've got traffic that's flowing through, whether it be college students or people who may be less fortunate, you know, it's a difficult one to answer. And certainly, we want to look at it. And I've been one in the past that has encouraged us to look at the opportunities to try and control it because there has to be some way that we can, if we don't stop the business operation, we at least need to spread it across the city more evenly so that you don't wind up with huge pockets of this situation that we have starting to take place over in North Murfreesboro. So, it's, it's not going to be as easy as I wish it would be to try and fix this problem because it's obviously a problem that is much deeper than just saying, "I don't like that business, so let's, don't let them put it there." It's going to be much deeper than that.
Council, Smotherman was right about the free market. If there wasn't a demand for them, they wouldn't be coming here, just like anything else. The feds are looking at capping the interest rate, looking at restricting how many loans you can get over a period of time. And I do know that from my little research that I kind of share with y'all from time to time. But it'll be a little more difficult than you think. They have a very strong lobby. And here's what it is.
Yeah. I think you're hearing from the council that we would like some information to come back and including that, maybe some design guidelines or figure ways how we can do that.
Mayor, with respect, I think the design guidelines, I think they'd be two different presentations.
Okay. I think that'd be great.
There's a lot that's been done already on the payday loans. The design guidelines may be separate and lagged a little. We should be able to...
That'd be fine. And I think that may be something that we have the discussion with our consultants who are here now, how other communities have done that. You know, something, I don't want to disparage other businesses, but, you know, I had the conversation the other day and, you know, we threw out a big idea that, well, you know, I would argue that Broad Street's the gate, just as much of a gateway to our community as Medical Center Parkway and Broad Street. When you drive down Broad Street, it looks like you're traveling back through the seventies with the streetlights and everything in the center of the median. And, you know, my dream would be that, one of these days, that Broad Street, you know, utilities are underground, that it's a, it's an area you go through. And when that investment's, when that investment's put in, people want to renovate their facilities. And when we, when we don't have that vision in what we're working on, we don't see people who want to invest money in those areas. And that's really what we're talking about, is how can we, how can we help that? So...
Yeah. If you look at old pictures of the square, Bill can provide us with those. But, you know, there were telephone poles, light poles, lines and everything running all around the square. And it, you look at it now and it's so much prettier the way it is. The bridge over Broad Street right now, I mean, so much of what we've seen so far in the project has been getting those lines underground and the utilities out of sight. And so, we're going in that direction. It's just, it's not going to happen overnight. We know that. But, you know, I think that you're right on as far as, you know, coming into Murfreesboro Broad Street is still, in my opinion, more of a gateway than Medical Center Parkway is.
Well, we have a plan for it, to fix it. We really do. And we just need to fund it.
Yeah. And you're right. At the same time, last night, we, Planning Commission and Doug and I are fixing to go on a field trip, riding around town, looking at signs, signage. And it'll be coming before the council before long. But the, this sign ordinance that's coming before us is going to be interesting because we're going to have to decide how many windows, how much window space are we going to allow people to use for cigarette and alcohol and Lotto and signage that are, they're, I mean, at some point, we have to say enough is enough. And, you know, you say, "Well, that's taking away from their ability to succeed in the market maybe." But no, that we do want our city to be an exceptional city and that beacon of light in the distance should be Murfreesboro. And I really hope that, you know, we can continue to make the proactive decisions that will help direct us in that direction.
One of the nice things about some of these things that maybe we can do is that if nobody can paint their building orange, that means it's fair. You know, so they still, you still have no advantage over someone else. If everybody has the same type of sign ordinance, it's at least fair, you know, where you don't have some people that have different opportunities than others. So, at least if we keep it fair, we, it's, you know, for me, what Shane, what Shane brings up is, let's see what some of these options are. I think it's clearly worth, worth looking at. I suspect there are some people who would think that there have been damage been done to neighboring properties by some of these things. And we ought to at least address that and address the concerns of our citizens. I've certainly heard it plenty of times. So, yeah, absolutely. Good idea.
All right. Last but not least, there are two things. Want to congratulate the Middle Tennessee Lady Raiders, how well that they did in the NIT. And... And also the, the men for making it to the championship game, on the way beating Old Dominion University, our city manager's alma mater, again. Uh, and I think the baseball team beat Old Dominion again as well, so.
Like six or seven times. Well, it ended all right in the road.
They beat them in football, too.
At some point, uh, our consultants will tell you the law of averages will catch up and you'll win one here at some point. So we'll stand adjourned.
Oh, that was good.